Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the bills. Now I'll have a chance to look at the bills. Is there any questions on the billing?
I asked.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bills.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Approval of the June 12th, 2024 meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the June 12th meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And try to make them slightly funny.
Yeah.
With our adjournment and opening, reopening, then readjust.
Finally closed.
Alright. Start off with our fast new York grant. I know Courtney also added this into his. Yeah, his report. We're having a web meeting scheduled for July 18th with the representatives from New York State to go over the grant. GEDC, Mark Massey, and Chris Wazie will be in on that with us. And so we can answer any other further questions the state has, pass through the first phase. Now they're getting even deeper and deeper, so. I'm hoping that this goes well. We did hire LaBella Associates to write our park grant. So they're working on that now. I know Courtney and Renee have been working with Mike Coquy from LaBella to get that submitted. Our clean energy grant, we have a representative coming out. That's the one that I served up, awarded us for $10,000 for the car charging station. And we're not sure if we can get one or two, depending on the cost, when the representative gets here and looks over the situation. He'll quote, give us a quote, and we'll know when, you know, get one or two to replace the failing ones that we have now. We did put the adaptive park swing in Hickory Park that came in. Again, we didn't get a grant for it, but we did use the money out of our general budget for parks. And that has been installed. So, great that all the children now have a great park experience, you know.
That's cool.
The park, so. Our Tree and Park Committee, we met just a few nights ago. And we discussed the upcoming fun day that the BBCA is sponsoring at Hickory Park on July 20th. And our Tree and Park Committee is sponsoring a cornhole tournament. Committee, and I know Mike and his wife are instrumental in setting up that, so thank you for that.
Does it fill up now?
Uh.
Around to a few around complete.
I think we're gonna be gone, but I thought Brendan Marasaki was getting a group of people.
Well, we're still waiting to hear from him, so.
We've got, I think, 12 teams out of 20 so far, so we'll get there.
Okay, and looking for a good fun day for all the residents, you know, on July 20th. And also, we've added another concert to the park. Cummings Family and Friends. John Cummings contacted me and asked about playing, and they did a great job last year. They drew a big crowd, and I said, by all means, yeah, if you want to do one, we'd love to have you, so they're gonna do that.
What time are those at?
Oh, it's usually 6:30, 6:30 to 8:30. They played even longer than that last year.
We had to kick them out.
They're gonna be playing, I believe it's August 28th. So. Great family, into a lot of the community. Park, the summer recreation programs in Full Swim now, Hickory Park, where we got roughly 30 children there taking advantage of the activities there.
Is it just one person, that Evie or Evvy, or?
Evie.
She has other people helping?
She's got two other helpers.
Oh, nice.
One's paving, the other's on tier.
What are the age ranges of the kids that come?
We usually say five to 15, but nobody comes that old, so really between five and 10 mostly.
That runs through August 8th, so. Happy to report, I submitted the Rose Garden Bowl Vahala Restaurant to the New York State Historic Business Preservation Registry. Sent that into assembly with Steve Hawley's office. The requirements were that a business had to be, be in business for 50 years. And I know the Rose Garden, I believe, is 70 years now.
No kidding?
Yeah. So, it's quite an honor to be on that list. And I'm sure he'll be presenting that certificate to Tom Sardoo. It's at the Rose Garden. There's something I forgot to put on my report is that Todd, Courtney, and I met with the sheriff here. And I sat down with him and explained to him, you know, our concerns here in the village. Everything from the four-wheelers to the mini bikes to the speeding. We laid it on the line, and I stressed that I want enforcement. I don't want a lot of warnings, I want enforcement. I want word to be getting out that slow down in this village, because it's getting out of hand, so. He said he would pass that on to his deputies.
This is still though, as they want overtime they come, or do we, can we pay more?
It's both. They do come out, allocate so much time, and then the overtime is there also. He did say that they're still way short stacked by deputies, so. So, you know, when they get out here, they get out here, and also we stressed about the overnight parking on the streets. I did include that in my last newsletter, to tell everybody, hey, don't park on the streets. You know, overnight, because if the police are around, they will ticket you, so. He's supposed to let all the, you know, the deputies know that, so. So we're doing what we can, and I had a nice resident email me, and she requested a speed sign going up town line 262 here, going up, going west. And I'll be honest, we tried to do that years ago when our last superintendent was here. He actually put a sign up there, a 30 mile an hour zone, a speed sign, and the county made us take it down.
Because it's their road or?
It's their, it's a county road, okay, so they made us take it down. So, probably a year, year and a half ago, I contacted the county and asked them if we could put a sign back up there, because people don't realize it's 30, because it looks like you're in the country, and they're doing 50 there. And I was told, no, you can't do that, because people know the speed limit is 30, they're inside the village until they see the 55 mile an hour zone sign. Then they know they're speeding, they're breaking the law, you have to have your police enforce the law.
Can you just put another 30 mile an hour speed?
Isn't it, if it's not posted, it's 55? I mean, isn't that always?
Well, when you come into the village, it's 30. Until you leave the village, it's 30, and then.
Where's the village line there, though?
After Kmart.
I get, I.
But that's part of the problem, is the village line comes across and then straight down to 30, 262, 2Kmart. So, half the road, one side of the road is town, the other side is village. That plays into it too.
How bizarre.
So anyways, resident contacted the comedy highway and told them what's going on there, and how it's, you know, close to being a lot of accidents there, which there are. And low and behold, they're gonna put a sign up now.
Right, because of resident.
So I'm grateful to her for contact, and I emailed her back, and thank you so much. I guess the squeaky wheel gets greased, because it should make it safer for everybody, so.
They're putting up a speed limit sign, or one of those?
Speed limit. No, just the signs, it's 30.
Oh, okay. Not the flashing?
No. So. I'm very grateful for the resident for doing that, I mean. Make it safe. In your package, there's a couple of quotes for the painting that we discussed for the front of the building and the top.
Yep.
Courtney received those two quotes, and I believe he's going to obtain a couple more.
Yes. Yeah, I talked to Sherman Williams Paint, and they have a list of people they would recommend, so we'll get some more quotes from them. But I included in your package, so I can kind of see ballpark. The two I got, I received, both came highly recommended. Everybody knows Dr. Painters, so they were both on the same ballpark.
I never heard of Bo Paint Company.
Yeah.
Oh, that's Chandler Bo.
Yes.
Ah, okay.
They do phenomenal work.
Nice, he did one of the houses over here on Clinton Street.
Mm-hmm.
Huh, nice.
Yeah, he graduated with Leah and my Josh.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
I even thought that was a pretty fair price for what we have to do.
They were pretty close, then, 7,900 and 7,900, huh?
Yes.
Now, so, I did notice that the one upcharged 1,300 the house for a three-year warranty?
Right, it's a different kind, he said it's a special kind of paint from Sherman Williams, and that, with that paint, you get the warranty. I don't know if it's worth it, but.
Yeah.
The only other thing I have is discussing the bids for the electric, so we'll get into that under new business. So with that, I'll turn it over to Courtney.
Yeah, I already had my report there. Just a couple things to add. Sidewalks, we're gonna be getting into the repair of sidewalks. I put it up to some contractors to get bids, so we'll have those for next time. And tomorrow, the electric plant, electric shop is being paved. So we're getting help from Churchville and Burge, Town Burge.
Is that up there by Sage Pavilion, or where is it?
Uh, no, on the other side by Bonwell.
Oh, okay.
Kind of next door to where the old village garden.
Oh, okay. The tour is gonna come in handy.
Yeah, yeah, so that'll be good, have that kind of done. They've been working on digging it out and getting it ready. It is more prepper today, and it's still down and rolling it. So tomorrow's the paving day. So that, I felt like we wanted to add.
Good.
This time of year is just getting last year's year finished and closed and all the reporting put together, so that's what I'm focusing on. Taxes, Renee printed it out for us. It shows that we've collected 93% of property taxes so far. We have 28,629,80 left to collect, so that's pretty good. Actually, this time it's 95%, I mean, it was early. If you look at who owes money, most of the time it's the same people year to year.
Do they send out notices, or what happens?
Yes, so they, June 30th was the last day to pay without penalty. Now every month until October, they can pay here without, including a penalty. So we will send out an notice towards October time, so they see if we can get some more people to pay. After that, it goes to the county to collect, and the county, whatever is owed, the county then pays us back, pays us the money in full, and then they collect it. Also, at that time, sewer arrears goes on there as well, so if anybody owes sewer at that time, we add it to their property taxes, when it gets sent to the county, it gets paid there. Actually, yeah, it's on the county, it's, I'm sorry, the arrears is already on the village taxes right now. So, yeah, so it's April, like, and all of it goes to the county in October.
Okay.
So we'll share that with you.
As far as the tour we had planned for tonight, we canceled because of the inclement weather.
Yeah, makes sense.
Because Chris would have to be at the sewer plant to explain to us, and we didn't want to chance the weather and downpours, and so we figured, let's shoot for the next meeting, and hopefully have good weather. We, you know, have to worry about getting rain down, so.
Yep, understood.
It had to work out with Bob not being here too, so. It's good.
Does that mean we'll plan just for during normal time next?
Yeah, same, the meeting, yeah. Okay. Gary's got his report in here for the CEO. CEO?
Yeah, I think I was busy the last few weeks. And he has contacted a number of people with lawn issues and with muffle, unreserved vehicles. He hasn't had great response, so he's taking the next step and writing the notice in order to fix the issues. And then, the next step, he's going to cite them and take them to court to force them to do it.
Well, I've sent a few pictures to Officer Hale in regards to the vehicles there on, across from Renee's house. The guy's got Vermont plates, and they rotate them on different vehicles. Yesterday, two Vermont plates that are identical are on three of them. So you know he's just slapping the plates on the driver.
Okay, yeah, summertime, you know, everybody's doing their projects. So it's busy time for Gary. Any questions on any of the officer's reports? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept them.
On the, on the taxes, where it says other, does people pay by cash, check, and other? Do they pay with a credit card, or what's that?
No.
That's interesting. I was wondering if it was a credit card or their fees, or how's that work?
Showing accountability will always have a question.
Can't pay taxes with a credit card.
I know, it's bizarre.
Right, so, yeah, we don't take them by credit card, because they charge us, you know, 3% or whatever, so we don't take credit card. It could have been ACH or.
Or YR.
Yeah. Because we did have a number who signed up for ACH for the taxes, so that could be that, but probably nobody did that. It could be something different, but I can't remember what's on that.
I was just curious. No, I have no other questions, but.
I don't make a motion to accept the bills.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Trustee concerns. Heard of that, any concerns? Mike?
Um, the only concern, so last month I mentioned the grates, and the water drain grates in the front over here. And it's just because I walk my dog all the time, I just wonder if the guys can do an inspection of them. Oh, there's a few loose over in front of Harry's. There's still a couple that are a little, it's just when you walk over and Joe, I just don't want to go to the sewer, or somebody put into a bad position. They're a weird system that's locked down, but a lot of them have, like, some pretty sharp angles up. I don't know if they hammer them down, or whatever they gotta do, but there's some, just some things there, so.
Joe, you have a question, you know better than anybody. How does that system work, and does it go anywhere?
Yes. They do go. They actually drain all the way down to the area behind, in front of the Morgans. You'll see a couple of big manhole covers there. And from there, oven here goes into there, and then it goes underneath Carpenter Park, under the railroad.
It goes to the creek there?
Yeah.
So there are all these little ones, in the sidewalks?
They're all tied in.
The little narrow ones that are tied down there.
Yeah, they're tied into it.
And how much do we need those little ones?
I don't know. I don't know how much water they actually collect. And they were done when the project, capital project was done.
So even the ones over on Munger Street or wherever, they're all tying up here?
No, Munger doesn't have any.
If you walk out, you can see these little.
The other end has drains, but not the front end.
They're just in front, they're all, they just all run out, so. Look, there's a lot of sharp angles and stuff, a lot of.
The reason I ask is because they've always been a problem. They're always, because you go through with the plow in winter time, and you can't help but hit them, and then they bend up, and they're loose, and then they're constantly out. I just don't know how useful they are, and if they're not that useful, then it's just out of there.
There's no underground part to it, they're just a ditch, right? There's no piping in there?
No, there's, there's like forage, I believe there's forage.
Oh, yeah, there is piping in there.
At underneath?
Underneath, yeah.
Underneath those trenches?
Underneath the other, underneath the concrete and everything.
Underneath the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Okay.
What else would be down there, if it wasn't a pipe?
It would just be some, just.
Crusher, run.
And then the run into the street, and then drain, right? I'm assuming it's just for water drainage, right?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Anyway, the grates look like they're in rough shape, so, someone, I don't know, just, I had to see a lawsuit or somebody hurts themselves or something.
Yeah. I know we have bought new ones to replace the ones that were damaged.
Well, if we have to do it, we'll answer it.
Alright.
Yeah, the house that they're living in, either?
Nope.
They were.
Well, right in front of the garage, where they're pulling heavy trucks in and out all day, and smushing those things in, you know.
Yeah, they're only probably, what, this wide?
Yeah, they're, yeah, six inches. But the whole street long, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's my only concern, other than the mini bikes and motorbikes, but you address that, so.
Todd?
I noticed the other day, right where Hunter Street meets 19th, there's a hole. It's probably about a foot and a half long, you know, three, four inches wide, but it's very deep. I don't know if that's within the state DOT, or if that's on us to do anything with that. You'd have to go up there and take a look, but I mean, if they're paving tomorrow, if they could get a grain shovel full of blacktop, and they could fill that up, and they'd be fine.
Where, is it on the other side of the sidewalk, or?
No, it's actually, well, the sidewalk doesn't cross Hunter Street there. They're in front of the fire department, where the stop sign is.
Okay.
It's like right on the edge of 19 and Hunter Street.
On the car.
Yeah.
That's state.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to take a look and make a determination of whose responsibility, because I wasn't really sure, but it probably should get addressed before all the big trucks start rolling in and out of Bonwell or Norterra, you know, it'll make it worse.
I wonder if that's the same problem with that, when you're coming west on Munger Street, and then you turn north onto Clinton. There's a, I don't know if there's a manhole cover or whatever there, it's, it's a deep.
You talk of where there's a cover there?
Is it catch basin?
Yeah, catch basin.
Catch basin?
Super annoying. You have to try to drive around it, so the people try to drive around it, and then they pull out and they're in a lane.
So you're saying it's below grade too far?
Yeah.
Make a note of it. We have raised other ones up, but risers on them to bring them up.
I just noticed, because when you're coming in from a different direction, you see people that are turning off there, go out and around, and then they're going out into the other lane. It's not a lot of traffic there, but I do it myself, and then I notice other people doing that.
Okay. Alright, anything else?
When do they have the schedule for the roadwork this year?
We don't have a definite date, probably September, they were thinking.
They're gonna do the micro paving again, right?
Yeah. It's a good product, it's just.
Yeah, I think it's held up well on Rochester Street.
Just getting all the residents, you know.
Hopefully this time they'll not have you running around in the morning knocking on doors.
Like last year.
You can't drive for a few hours. You gotta shut the road down for a few hours.
But that's in lieu of doing like an oil gravel kind of thing, that would be so much better.
Yeah. Yeah, it sure is.
It looks so much nicer.
Yeah.
Looks like a new paved road.
Yeah, it's, you know, with all the chip seal and stone and cracked windshield and.
Well, if you need help going to village residents' homes.
Well, we'll send a notice out, but it's, it can be tough for some people, you know. Especially when you're in the middle of a street, and where do you, where do you put your car, you know? People say, like, on Richmond Avenue, if they gotta get out, you can't drive on Buffalo Street, you can't get out the other end, you know, it's just an example.
Yeah.
It's, it's a minor inconvenience for a short time, but it sure is better than that chip seal. So, you just gotta have everybody's, get notice out, you know, so. But we told the vendor there, you know, we need notice, can't pull what you did last year there. I mean, the night before, you're putting notices on people's doors at 10 o'clock at night. You can't, you gotta have your car out of here by 8:00 in the morning.
What?
Yeah, we didn't even know they were gonna be here that day.
Or Joe's running up and down the street knocking on doors at 7:00 in the.
Oh, that's terrible.
Yep. Alright, let's move on to new business. Award a bid. We received two bids. This is for a lot of the substation equipment. And you can see the two, two amounts. Peak Substation Services, the amount, and Stuart Herby, those are the two bids. We spoke with our engineer, who's overseeing this project. And he spoke very highly of Peak Substation Services. He's worked with them in the past, and he's very, very happy with the services they provide.
And then from Alabama?
He likes working with them, yeah.
So this bid is for how much of the project?
Uh, well, there's gonna be other equipment, some other equipment.
Okay.
But this is the majority.
Right, this is actually a construction part of it.
Yeah, they're doing the construction, where you have tire crews that come in to dismantle the old station, and pork, you know, footers and stuff for the equipment.
Do you know anything about Stuart Herby, or not?
What's that?
Have you heard anything about Stuart Herby? Do you know anything about them?
I think they're newer into this.
We've worked with Stuart Herby on different products and buying things for years, but there's, like Joe said, there's new to this part.
Yeah, we've, yeah.
Their lead times were a lot longer.
And we're, we're getting under the gun here for time, timer streets with Oxbow. They break ground up there. They expect to have a building up within, like, a year from now, just over a year. So, we, we really need to get this stuff ordered.
And how do companies know how to bid for here, like, why, I've been wondering why there's not three, or just not three?
Bids?
Bids, yeah, three contractors that know about it, or three that are interested?
We sent out, so, you know, we did the regular thing, we put it in the paper, but with the, the engineer gave us a list of about a dozen people, contractors that might be interested, and we sent those packets out.
Oh, and then you only get two back?
Yeah, I did, with this one and the last one with the transformers. And, you know, still, I think we got two for the transformers, two, three.
We only got one for the sewer, we only got two for the garbage, I mean, so it's, it's thin out there.
Yeah.
Well, as a steward of village funds, I go with Peak Substation Services, I mean, it's the lower bid.
Yeah.
There's a history there, the engineer.
Highly recommended.
I'm good with that.
Is there any recommendations? Is there any recommendation at all for going with the other Stewart Herby?
I mean, yeah, would it be a different, like a reason why we would go with a higher bid?
No. Not when the engineer's telling me he's worked with...
Well, I think we're bound by the lower bid then.
Right.
And just by the name, you know, they specialize in substations, you know? Whereas, I don't know with Stewart Herby, you know, like Courtney said, we've dealt with them buying line supplies for a lot of years, but I was honestly, I didn't know where they even did substation, you know, so...
Okay, so...
I would entertain a motion though that we accept a bid for Peak Substation Services in the amount of five hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars.
I have another question about it. So is there any... Do they quote them exactly for the exact same services? There's not... There's no reason that Peak Substation's gonna come back with additional charges for something that was quoted by Stewart Herby?
No, there's a place in the bidding process here in the pages where if there's differences they have to note it. So no. They have to meet the specs that the engineer wrote for the equipment.
Then I'll make a motion to accept the quote by Peak Substation Services.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Gary?
One thing I will say about the lack of quotes is that there's... There's a lot of companies that don't want to deal with government work because it's prevailing wage and tons of red tape. And then getting into the whole prevailing wage thing is...
They're guesstimating, yeah.
Next thing on our new business is the Energy Efficiency Program Budget. We call it BEEP, Virgin Energy Efficiency Program. I was thinking earlier today, it's gotta be like approximately twelve years now that we've been doing this. We used to be a member of the IDEP, Independent Energy Efficiency Program, which a lot of the systems in the MUA are members of, but we got out of that about twelve years ago because we saved a lot of administration costs, the fees they were charged for administration. So it's been done in-house now. Courtney and Renee oversee this, which they have done a great job for the last twelve years doing this. And we run our own program here. It's pretty much in line with the IDEP, pretty much just about everything they do, we offer. And we send the... We send yearly reports into the Power Authority.
Public Service.
And the Public Service Commission so that they know that we're doing our part for energy efficiency. That was part of the global settlement with the Power Authority, which had all the systems practice energy efficiency. So we, by doing what we do and filing these reports, we show that we're doing what we have to do, you know, to be in compliance and to go along with the guidelines of the global settlement, so... Renee and Courtney do this, prepare this budget. They don't have a crystal ball in front of them, but they do the best they can to, you know, to foresee what they think all the accounts, you know, will entail for the ensuing year, so... This money comes out of the everyone's bill. It's a one mil adder added on to everyone's electric bill. That's through the Public Service Commission. It's a one mil adder, which is one tenth of one cent per kilowatt hour cost, and it's no different than, say, Niagara Mohawks charges and SBC charge, service benefit charge, same thing. They collect the same money, the same, I believe it's one mil adder also, and that money they collect goes to NISERDA, and NISERDA distributes that for energy efficiency.
So the residents get charged the point zero zero one. That brings in thirty-five grand.
Yes.
And then you, the village pays out to residents, appliance rebates, window door rebate, refrigerator pickup?
Yeah, so if you buy a refrigerator and you put your old one, you get rid of your old one, put it up to the curb.
Yeah.
They give you seventy-five dollars for that.
Oh, okay.
And then that way, people aren't tempted to put it in their garage and have it went out there. An old refrigerator out in the garage where it's hot and stuff, it uses a lot of electricity, so it's a good way to get rid of it.
Oh, okay, got it. And then you pay out all this other stuff, then the budget for paying it out is forty-nine?
Well, yes, so we...
You anticipate electrical vehicle advancement is gonna go way up this year maybe because you're getting the two new stations?
Right, we're gonna have to contribute to that station, right? You have the two trucking stations. Yeah, so this is a projection of how much, you know, we think we want to put in there, but a lot, many, there've been many years where the whole thirty-five thousand wasn't used, so we've accumulated a rollover of about, about sixty thousand dollars. So we're trying to, you know, we want people to use that money, we want them to... We want to break even, and then for a long time we're breaking even where it was almost exactly the same amount, and that's really the goal. But in the last few years, it hasn't been used or been used for different things, and so we haven't been giving out the money as much, so, you know, we're trying to get it spent down, so... So we don't have too much sitting there. We will have to use some of the money for the Chinese stations, which is a good thing. It'd be great if we could get two, one for here, one for the park, focus on the one out back. A lot of the ten thousand dollar grant money, and you saw my report, we did get that money in, so we have that now, which is great. Just wait for a site visit from the company that does it.
What's the municipal lighting? Fixtures or...
Right, so we, last year we put money in there for the electric speech signs and also when we do the lights in the park around the track. We have poles, but only the light fixtures. So that'd be a little... So it'll be LED efficient lights.
Like I said, he doesn't... They don't have a crystal ball in front of them, they know how many furnaces are gonna be replaced or how much, you know?
The furnace replacement, we also include that the...
Many splits?
Many splits, the heat pumps in there, and those have been really popular and have been doing really well there.
They're gonna continue to get more and more popular?
For about ten of the last twelve years, we've given out light bulbs around to every house and put all light bulbs and sometimes nightlights along with information about the program. And we haven't done do that last year, we just felt like people should have enough light bulbs by now. We'd like to do, continue doing something like that because I feel like it's the best way to advertise the program. People really don't read the newsletters as much as they should, so they don't get the information in there, but they get a free gift on their doorknob that seems to... People, we've done it all these years, and the same people are like, hey, I didn't know this existed. So Renee had a great idea, and I have to investigate a little bit, about a box of LED Christmas lights. It might be festive for everybody to have a strand and... We're gonna look and see what that would cost, and I'll bring that back to the board.
Kind of like the Ring of Fire they do at the lakes, we could have a little something for the other house.
Yeah, yeah. The BBCA tried to do that that one year where they had the...
Yeah, the candles.
Bag, yeah. That would be really neat.
So you need... Would you just approve?
Yes.
Yeah, it's really a formality. It isn't really necessary, but it's good for the board to pass it, so we have kind of a guide and information to pass along to the PSC.
More transparency.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the 2024, 2025 BEEP budget.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Good explanation, thank you.
Okay, next thing is our resolution number five of 2024. This is to establish the equipment fund?
You will notice that it's a hundred fifty thousand, not a hundred and ten thousand that I talked about last month because I mixed up a little bit. It's fifty this year, fifty last year, and fifty the year before. The ten thousand that I had in my head was what we put in for the sewer, the sewer equipment.
We talked about this last month, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is just the...
The actual...
Yeah, the actual referendum then?
Yeah, so you'll pass the resolution, and then it'll be both signed in the daily news and four places around the village. And then the residents have thirty days to come in with a petition and say they don't want it. It's not something there, you know, anybody, I don't think anybody that have a problem will still do it, and so it'll be passed and subject to permissive referendum, so if nothing happens, have the stated date, then it goes into effect, then we can proceed with setting up the reserve.
So you don't need anything out of us for this?
I need to pass it.
And what did we pass last time then? Just now, the referendum, the resolution?
Well, I just brought it up.
We discussed this.
For discussion and see if you're interested and...
And this is the official?
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to accept a permissive referendum to establish a reserve account in the total of a hundred and fifty thousand current.
Okay.
A second then.
Pending no permissive referendum.
Right.
Okay, there's a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry? Okay, under Old Business, we touched base on it earlier, the tully building painting, like we said, we've got two quotes. Courtney's gonna obtain some other quotes from Sherwin-Williams, from the contractors that they know, that, you know, do a lot of business with them. And get a couple more quotes and see what they are, and then the board can decide how to proceed, if they want to proceed, or, you know, yes, no, maybe, okay?
Sounds good.
So we'll get those, we'll put that on the agenda, all right?
And then the one thing I wanted to bring up, it was another torque, but I had the building on the side of the building that's ten years old, which it's in fantastic shape for being ten years old. There's a couple spots, there's only one real spot where it peeled along the bottom, it also peeled, but that's to be expected when, you know, that's, you know, that's all. So I would like to have it repaired. Had Chip Miller come out to take a look. So there's a few things that we need to do to get it ready, and then he'll come out and fix it.
He originally painted?
He didn't originally paint it, so he'll fix it back to the way it looks.
With another protective coating.
Yes, and then this company called Golden, it's not in here, like where he lives, but I mean, it's a protective coating, it worked great so far.
Yeah, ten years, that's great.
It's facing south and gets all that sun and hasn't really faded, so it's doing really, really well.
And he puts a clear coat on it, or the company puts it?
We will do that. We'll just buy it, the paint. Not the paint, it's like the lacquer.
So you're gonna send a quote?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, this seems appropriate, get a quote. Or are we just going with it? You gotta get a quote, right?
Yeah, I mean, either way, I feel like it's something that needs to be done.
Yeah.
It's not exactly an observer foundation.
Now, what about David Burke, who painted a mural over at the library? He's a local person, does he... I mean, he didn't do the original painting, I just wondered if he might be cheap and local.
Yeah, I'm not sure. It's an interesting question. I just wonder if something like he wouldn't want to touch somebody else's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I just was thinking.
He might, he might, but the style is so different, I just wonder, but maybe they'll fix it.
Well, if the original is around, like the original guy?
Yeah. He's still around, but at some point in time he won't be, and so then we will have to find somebody else to...
Todd can do it then.
He knows the materials too that we use.
That's right.
You know, which has held up so well. Before I close, I want to thank Todd, been going around doing some work on our roadside trees, pruning them. Thank you, thank you for...
Pulled all the weeds out of those two in front of the bathroom, too.
Well, thank you so much.
Thanks, Todd.
Nice.
Glad I can pitch anywhere I can.
I haven't even been around over at Martin at all.
It's getting a lot of use.
Yes, sure is.
It's really, it's good to see. All these years I've lived here, this is the most I've seen it looking great and getting a lot of use.
Yeah. Okay. Any... I'll have a motion to close.
Make a motion to close?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Good summer meeting.
Thank you.
So Courtney, you'll send out something for a tour next? Like let us know if that's a go or whatever?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll see what they'll lose.
Yeah.
Yeah, Todd, Chris is also up and ready to do it today.
Yeah.